Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Canton Planning Commission for Monday, October 18th. And as usual, we always like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Mr. Zuber, would you call the official role, please?
Sure, I do not see Commissioner Taria. Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes, here from Canton Township, Wayne County.
Commissioner Engel?
Here Canton Township, Wayne County, Michigan.
Awesome. Commissioner Foster?
Good evening, here from Canton Township, Wayne County, Michigan.
I do not see Commissioner O'Con or Singh. So Commissioner Weber?
Hello, present from Canton, Wayne County, Michigan.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Zuber here from Canton Township, Wayne County, Michigan, and Chairman Green.
Present Canton Township, Wayne County, Michigan. All right, we last had a meeting, oh, and I don't cannot forget our community planner, Mr. Patrick Sloan. We need to identify all of the characters involved in tonight's meeting. So let us, let us proceed with, let's see, let's talk about, oh, wait a minute. We had, we don't have a, we don't have any minutes from the last meeting?
No, they were completed just after the agenda was published. So they'll be on the November, the next regularly scheduled meeting on November.
Okay, alright. Tried to throw me for a loop, did you? Getting me out of my sink here.
I think he succeeded.
Alright, well, we do have an agenda tonight of three items. Do we have any late additions from staff?
No additions.
Anything that the commission would like to talk about, can add to the agenda? Alright, do I enter, anyone entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So.
Second.
Alright, we've got a motion to approve tonight's agenda by Commissioner Weber and a support by Commissioner Zuber. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Alright, let's proceed with our first agenda item of the evening. It is a public hearing. And as such, Patrick, do we have audience participation tonight, or is it just project sponsors?
There is a public hearing tonight for this, so we'll have a, we'll have a public hearing. I don't see anyone in the audience that's representing the applicant. I'm hoping they're not having connection issues, but I just sent a couple of emails to their team just to remind them.
Okay, alright, well, let's, let's go on. We are, the first item is Alexandra and Arianna LLC, otherwise known as Dogology University, where we're considering rezoning for property which is located south of Ford Road between Morton Taylor and Sheldon Road. Patrick, can you give us more detail?
Sure. The property owner is proposing to rezone a part of the parcel at 44125 Ford Road from OSP, which is off-street parking and Central Business District overlay to the C2 Community Commercial with the Central Business District overlay on the same property. The parcel is located on the south side of Ford Road and the east side of Brookline Road. And the subject property proposed for rezoning is an area of about forty feet by one hundred and twenty-seven and a half feet, which includes the southern ten feet of the building and the area located about thirty feet south of this building. Specifically, the way it's written in the resolution or the motion is the subject property proposed for rezoning is described as the south half of the vacated alley adjacent to lot 404 and the north thirty feet of lot 404 of McIntyre Manor subdivision. And I will have to go in and make a couple of text changes there, but the proposed zoning is because the tenant is Dogology University. And it's an indoor pet boarding and training facility. And they were recently granted a special land use to occupy the building. It was later discovered that the building is not entirely within the C2 zoning district. The southern ten feet of the building is in the OSP off-street parking district. The off-street parking district does not allow specific land uses beyond parking, so it's a very limited district. And so certainly it's appropriate to have that southern ten feet of the building out of the OSP and into the C2 district so that the entire building can be used for a commercial use. At the previous planning commission meeting, we had discussed some of the proposed operations that the applicants would be applying for. And one of them was they eventually planned to have an outdoor fenced-in bathroom area for the dogs. And at that time, it was conceptual, and it's still conceptual because we're at the point of a rezoning for a piece of property. So there's no site plan or a proposed plan that goes along with it outside of just the regular zoning plan. And additionally, the, the southern other than thirty feet of this rezoning request is in the off-street parking district. And it currently contains mostly parking spaces. It's on the north side of the access drive, so it's pretty far away from residences and doesn't interfere with the site at large either. The purpose of rezoning that southern thirty feet of the building is so the applicants can propose eventually to do an outdoor bathroom facility for the dogs. Right now, that facility would not be permitted in OSP because it's accessory to the commercial district, which is not, which would not be permitted in OSP. OSP is for parking only. In some cases, there are dumpsters, enclosures allowed in OSP, but nothing that is really use-related. So parking drives, landscaping dumpsters, those are the types of things that are in OSP. And the purpose of the OSP is to, to service some of the shallow commercial properties farther north along Ford Road. Some of the review considerations that we have to look at when we decide whether a property is rezoned is in section twenty-seven point zero six D four of the zoning ordinance. And there are ten criteria that apply. And first is whether the proposed amendment is in accordance with the basic intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. Our finding is that the C2 zoning as proposed is within the intent. First, it's the southern ten feet of the building should be rezoned because the current commercial use in the building was built for commercial uses. So that ten feet should be in the C2 zone. As for the southern thirty feet of the request, that area is currently in the Central Business District overlay. Not all OSP parcels are and not all of the OSP district adjacent to the site are. But the subject site that's proposed for the rezoning is in the Central Business District overlay, which is a commercial zone, predominantly a commercial zone. It defaults to the underlying zoning in terms of uses, but it's a commercial overlay district. Also, that subject area for the rezoning is also in the Downtown Development Authority. So there are some commercial indicators for the intended use of that property. The second criteria is regarding the relationship to the master plan. As designed, the proposed rezoning can be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the township. The subject area of the site is located in the, is classified as medium-density residential on the future land use map, which is the density of up to four dwelling units per acre. However, residential zoning and residential use for this forty-foot-wide subject area would be inappropriate given its proximity to commercial use and the associated traffic and parking on the site. At the same time, any rezoning to a district that's not explicitly recommended by the future land use plan should be carefully considered in the context of the overall comprehensive plan and the written policies in the plan. And there are some policies that do speak to commercial land uses and their expansion. There's objective one point two of the master plan that states that the township shall provide adequate land for commercial uses and direct new commercial uses to areas that are compatible with the established land use patterns and can be supported by public facilities. Another policy is section, first policy one point two point two is to establish a community shopping land use designation on the future land use map for community retail uses and personal and professional service, which serves the largest segment of the residential community. These are located along primary arterials and just north of the subject site is the community shopping future land use. And finally, policy four point two point three states that the township discourages future strip commercial development and physical isolation of adjacent uses. And the township requires wherever practical use of marginal access connections and joint access agreements for ingress and egress. There's an existing joint access drive south of the subject area for the proposed rezoning. So this is a joint access that already exists and it exists south of the subject area for the rezoning. The third criteria is whether conditions have changed since the zoning ordinance was adopted. One of the changes has been the special land use and the demand for use of the site or an indoor pet boarding and training facility. For most commercial uses to be feasible on a site, the entire building needs to be in the C2 zone for them to be feasible. Also, if the tenants propose a small outdoor bathroom area for the dogs and if it's in the current C2 portion of the site, the front yards adjacent to Ford Road or Brookline Street and the side yard adjacent to the bank would be the only areas which would raise concern for proximity to traffic, the road traffic, bank traffic and pedestrians. So in terms of any kind of accessory use to that onsite commercial use of the pet boarding and training facility, the south side of the building is the more appropriate area to put an accessory use. The fourth criteria is that the amendment will correct an inequitable situation created by the zoning ordinance rather than grant special privileges because the southern ten feet of the building should be in the same zoning district. Additionally, the proposed rezoning of the thirty-foot-wide area south of the building does not grant a special privilege because this area contains parking as accessory to the commercial use and is located in the CBD and DDA. The fifth criteria is that there's not an exclusionary zoning that is related to this, so that's not applicable. The sixth criteria is that the amendment will not set an inappropriate precedence as it is adjacent to an existing C2 zone and occupies an existing building and accessory parking area. And it's designed to be no larger than necessary to occupy the building and the thirty-foot-wide area south of the building. The remaining OSP area proposed on the site will include the driveway from Brookline, the parking area to the south and the landscape buffer around the property. The seventh criteria is that the proposed rezoning is consistent with existing land uses of surrounding property. The adjacent uses to the west and east are commercial. Although there are some residential to the southwest and south, which are single-family residential. Brookline Street separates the residential district to the west and the residential district to the south would be one hundred and forty-five feet from the proposed C2 boundary. It's also common in many areas of the township for a C2 district to a, but a residential district. And the zoning ordinance includes appropriate provisions for screening, noise, lighting and other related factors. The eighth criteria is that all requirements of the C2 district must be met if the property is rezoned. And based on the information provided, it appears that these requirements can be met. The ninth criteria is that it be consistent with trends in land development in the general vicinity. And we find that, as previously noted, Brookline Street separates the residential district to the west and the residential district to the south is one hundred and forty-five feet from the proposed C2 boundary. So beyond the setbacks of the residences, it's also adjacent to an existing C2 district, which makes it compatible. And finally, the subject property is served by an adequate road system and sanitary and water sewer system. So there's enough infrastructure in place to service the use. So if the criteria are adopted by the planning commission, our recommendation would be approval. We've written a model motion. The only modification in the model motion is that it is the vacated alley adjacent to lot 404 and the north thirty feet of lot 403, not 404. So if that motion is read, we'll just have to, we'll make that minor correction to that number. That concludes our report and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, since this is a public hearing, I guess we need to open the, the public hearing. Do I have a motion to do that?
Don't move.
Support.
Alright, we've got a motion to open the public hearing on this project by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Zuber. Commissioner Zuber, will you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
I think he was muted, but I you're still muted.
Just, I guess we do need audio.
Yes. I couldn't get the, couldn't get the cursor over there.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, okay, we have the public hearing open. One of the things that I would, right off the bat, Patrick, like to address, because I'm, I'm kind of confused as to how this, this happened, that, that C2 designation has been there on this, this property for a long, long time. We, the planning commission, changed that zoning to the south to allow parking because there was another intended use, a commercial use that was going to go in there. Now, at that time, how come the, the designation, okay, the line drawn in the sand, if you will, you know, included the building? You know, why would, why didn't we hit that back then? So that this building, which hasn't, the building hasn't, footprint hasn't changed, so that building should always have been in C2. I'm kind of confused as to how the building got any part of it into the, the parking designation, off-street parking.
Yeah, I think when the zoning line was, was placed, it was placed to follow the center of the alley. And there's a twenty-foot previous, previously there was a twenty-foot wide alley that's since been vacated. And I think it was intended to go through the center line of the alley, although the building occupies the whole alley. So I think from a, from a parcel line standpoint and bisecting the alley, the zoning line was probably drawn to match that, but if the building wasn't overlaid, at that same time, we would not have known.
Right, okay. Alright, you know, to me, we, we just need to avoid stuff like that in the future. I don't know that it'll cause any particular problems. We have to go through this exercise to kind of try to rectify a situation. But before we do that, want to hear, is, is there anyone in there, in the audience that has their hand raised?
There is one person in the audience with his hand raised. It's Matthew Limerand, who was the applicant for the special land use. And before I allow Mr. Limerand to talk, I, I did go through the notes one more time and the model motion is written correctly. It's the, the vacated alley adjacent to the, to lot 404. It's the south one-half of the vacated alley adjacent to lot 404 and the north thirty feet of lot 404. So that's written correctly. There, there was no error. I thought there was, but there wasn't, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so the model motion is, is correct as, as written. Okay, alright. Can we hear from Mr. Limerand?
Yep, Mr. Limerand, you're able to talk?
I just wanted to say thank you so much to the board. Thank you for understanding the mix-up in the, how it's being laid out and understanding and allowing us to use it for its intended purposes. Appreciate for your time and consideration and just thank you so much for allowing us to move forward.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add? Just?
You have anything else?
Straightforward, okay.
It's pretty straightforward.
Alright. Anyone else, Patrick, from the audience?
I don't see anybody else in the audience with their hand raised. And additionally, staff did not receive any comments, emails or letters about this proposed rezoning.
Alright then, do I hear an entertainment of a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, we've got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Zuber, would you call that vote, please?
Sure, Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. And so I'm just going to go right to the commission. Commissioner Foster, what do you think about this rezoning?
I don't have any issues with it. I think it makes sense.
Okay, Commissioner Weber?
I, I agree. I think it makes total sense, but I have no issue with it.
Commissioner Engel?
I'm in support.
Commissioner Zuber?
I agree. It's, I don't have any issues.
Yep. And Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes, I agree. I have no problem with it.
And I have no problems with it either. I'm just glad we caught it and, you know, are, are able to correct this to proceed. So with that said, do I hear a motion?
Sure, I move to recommend approval of the request to rezone the south half of the vacated alley adjacent to lot 404 and the north thirty feet of lot 404 of McIntyre Manor subdivision at 44125 Ford Road, parcel number seven one dash zero five seven dash zero one dash zero zero one three dash three zero one from OSP off-street parking and central business, central business district overlay to C2 Community Commercial and Central Business District overlay as the proposal meets the standards of section twenty-seven dash, or twenty-seven point zero six, section D four of the zoning ordinance as stated in the staff report.
Support.
Alright, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
I, okay, Patrick, so this, this little zoning change, was this, was this holding up something else on the project from going forward? Was this?
Um, I think partially with the southern ten feet of that building, when we were reviewing the special land use, there was a restriction that they would not have been able to use that southern ten feet of the building because it's not even in the, the proper zone. So when we reviewed the special land use, they weren't even eligible to apply to use that southern ten feet of the building for the indoor pet boarding facility. So this rezoning would grant quite a bit of relief there. Moving forward in terms of anything new, if they want to propose an outdoor bathroom area for the dogs, should this area of the property be rezoned to C2, the thirty feet south of the building, then there will be an upcoming special land use application to the planning commission for that.
So, so technically speaking, there was a part of the building that they, you know, they, they would not have been able to use for their business, in other words.
Correct.
Okay, I was, I just wanted to get a clarification. Okay, onward. Our second agenda item of the night is the NN Village. We're considering a site plan amendment and for property which is located at the southeast corner of Geddes and Denton. Patrick, could you give us more, more detail on that?
Sure. We previously reviewed the site plan at the September thirteenth and the October fourth planning commission meetings. And at those meetings, primarily the area of focus was the architectural elevation. And on a prior occasion in 2019, the preliminary site plan was approved by the planning commission and the board, but expired on August twenty-seventh, 2020. So the application has to start at the very beginning with preliminary site plan. And the layout of the preliminary site plan is much the same as it was in 2019. There are a couple of exceptions. The surface of the emergency access from Denton Road on the north side of the site has been changed from grass paper to pavement. This was a requirement of the fire department. The other change is that the number of units has increased from forty-two to forty-three with the forty-third unit occupying the area in the northwest part of the site that was previously proposed as a clubhouse. The, the density of forty-three units is still within the density of the current R4 zoning district. At the previous planning commission meetings on September thirteenth and October fourth, there was discussion about the elevations and wanting more detail from the applicants. There also been some minor site plan revisions which include the removal of the previously proposed emergency access connection and breakaway gate on the south side of the site that connected to Hawksbury Court. This emergency access was originally proposed due to some previous access limits of the emergency access from Denton Road. However, with the substitution of the clubhouse with a smaller residential unit and the paving of the emergency access from Denton Road, an additional emergency access is not expected to be required. So the proposed connection that was previously shown to Hawksbury Court has been removed from the plan. The associated gate has been removed off of many of the sheets. It's still on some of the sheets, although I think that's just mostly a cleanup thing for the applicant. They wouldn't otherwise be proposing a gate without the drive, so they will just have to take that breakaway gate off of all sheets of the plan before they would go to final site plan review. At preliminary site plan review, the purpose is mostly to establish the layout, establish the architectural elevations and the overall project scope. If preliminary site plan is approved by the planning commission and the board, the applicant then will have to go through the engineering review and get all the permits and get all the bonds in place. And once they're able to do that, they return to the planning commission board for final site plan review. So there's still some engineering work to be done for the final site plan review, but the layout is for the most part in its, in its final form. So with that, since the last meeting, the applicant had updated the architectural elevations and included more detail. There's more professional renderings, more examples. There's more consistency between the elevations and floor plans, including the four-foot rear horizontal offset and adding a rear walkout and a deck. The applicant's letter states that they have an elevation floor plan A and an elevation floor plan B, which are their formal fundamentals for this evening's case. They also have an elevation floor plan C that's still in, still in the design phases, but they submitted just for information purposes at this point just to illustrate what they're working on in terms of some final designs for that particular model. So that concludes staff report. If the architectural elevations are acceptable to the planning commission, our recommendation would be approval of the preliminary site plan subject to any conditions necessary, including renaming Heather Place to another name, as well as any additional conditions for elevations prior to final site plan review.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. If I recall correctly, this was tabled for a second time, correct?
Correct.
So is there someone who would like to pull that from the table?
Mr. Chairman, I move to pull that item back off the table, back on the table. Check or off the table? I don't know. Let's talk about it.
It's off the table.
Pull the tablecloth out from under it.
We have a motion to untable this project by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Zuber, will you call the vote on that, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel? Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
That's a yes. Okay, so Patrick is the project representative here tonight?
Yes, we have Mr. Mark Mahajan. I'll allow Mr. Mahajan to talk and he may be joined by some members of his team. I'll, I'll let him speak to that.
Okay, alright. Good evening. Mr. Mahajan, yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are three of architect, developer and myself, engineer Mark Mahajan. I believe we have submitted deficiencies you had brought up to our attention, including the elevations and some minor revisions to the site plan. As Patrick stated, those are As Patrick stated, those are done. So we're looking forward to hear from you. And, uh, request an approval.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, thank you for bearing with us on this and, um, we're, we're trying to work with you and, um, you know, come to a, um, a, a solution that's happy for all. Um, I'm gonna go right to the commission and I'm gonna go right to our architect who's had ample time to review these and get her opinion on this. I'm sure we all have ours. Question is, Uber, what do you think of, uh, the submitted elevations?
I think that these look great. They, this is a huge improvement over what we saw last time and I really, I thank the, uh, the people, the, the team for putting together a much, much nicer looking set of elevations. So I commend you.
Thank you.
Do you have, do you have a preference, A, B, or C, or do you, do you like just the idea of a mix?
I think it's nice to have a mix. I mean, I think that, um, let me put these back in my window here. I think that, um, I mean, I, I mean, it looks like they're just proposing to, to put together floor plans to give people options. So each floor plan has its own elevation um, or several elevation, a couple of elevations. But I think they all look nice. The one thing I would say is that, that in, I know you just submitted this, um, for, uh, for informational purposes, but the, the C, the elevation that you've submitted doesn't really go with the, the first elevation, the craftsman style. It's a very nice looking elevation, but it doesn't really go so well with the, um, that you put in with the other ones. I get that.
We are changing that one, you know, we like the concept, but the front elevations and those big columns and all that, they don't go with, but working on it is development.
Yep, nope, I, I'm, I am very much more satisfied, very much more satisfied. You know what I mean? Good job. Thank you.
So before we, uh, you know, go, go on, Commissioner Zubor, so you are okay with either A or B?
Correct.
Okay, alright. Um, Commissioner Foster, what do you think?
Um, I agree with, um, Commissioner Zubor. I think the elevations look really nice. Um, I was just looking, um, at my emails and Patrick, I apologize if you covered this in your synopsis and I missed it, but I know that there was a question from a resident on when um, the elevations would be updated to reflect, um, the removal, the removal of the gate access.
Uh, yes, I got that, uh, I, I got that as well in terms of the timing, um, and, um, I didn't have time to, uh, formally reply to it today, but I can, I can speak to this now that, uh, we're in the meeting. Um, the removal of the gate will be a condition. Um, at the very least, will have to be done prior to final site plan review. By the time the final site plan comes back to the planning commission, the final engineering will be complete. It'll be very detailed. Everything would have been reviewed by county engineering and township engineering. So one of the items there in terms of a cleanup item will be removing the gate off of all the sheets. Um, I think it has been removed from many of the sheets, but it would have to be removed from all of them, just to make clear that there will be no gate there.
Okay, thank you for that, Patrick. Um, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, Commissioner Engel.
I'm fine. I like all the elevations. It looks good.
Commissioner Weber?
I think it's a thousand percent improvement over what we saw before. So I'm, I just want to clarify something you said, Mr. Chairman. I don't think, we're not picking an A or a B necessarily. This is what they expect to offer potential purchasers.
Right, I, I wanted to just get your, your feedback. Uh, did you have a preference of one over the other? Anything that you liked or disliked?
No, truthfully, I, I really like the one with the craftsman style one, but I agree with Commissioner Zubor that it doesn't really fit with the other elevation. But I, I, I think they're all fine.
Okay, Commissioner Eggenberger?
I agree. Much improvement. I don't have a problem with any of them. I think it, uh, will be a nice addition to our community.
Alright. I, um, I would concur with what has been said so far. I, the only thing I will add to this is, to me, um, don't even bother with C. Um, because I, I like A and B in this neighborhood and I can't see C being in the mix in this neighborhood. I just, I can't, I like C, but I can't see it being in as part of a choice, choice selection, uh, for those homes in there. I don't know how, if that's, I think kind of that's what everybody else has said too.
We'll definitely keep that in mind.
Okay, alright. So you definitely have a go on A and B from the commission, it sounds like. So, thank you so much for working with us. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, is the, the, the C, there's the craftsman style one and there's the one found that has, that's partially stone and, and siding. Is that their alternative to the craftsman's style one, or is, what, what is that one?
Mr. Mahan, uh, would you care to address that?
Uh, we are, we are, uh, for illusions, see, don't consider exactly the way it looks right now. Uh, redo it and, uh, it will be a different option.
We, I mean, eventually, as I said, it will be modified to suit with the other ones. It's in the development, as you see, there is no brick on it even right now. But we like some part of it. We are working on it and it might be offered as a different option for buyers, but we just don't know it this time.
That's fine. Okay, so Patrick, Patrick, so for us tonight, if we proceed, we're not telling them, you know, A, B, or C. We're just giving our opinion now as to what, what we think is, is acceptable, right? So if they come back with a more modified C, that, that would be something they would work out with staff, right? Cause I could see, I could see the, uh, the second C, um, being modified with brick or at least fifty percent brick or some, some form of, of the, the brick that we see in the other homes. I could see that being a third choice. I can't see the craftsman being a third choice, but I can see this one being a third choice. I don't know if other people confer with that or, or whatnot. I, I like, I like the idea that they would have three choices.
And, and eventually there might be more with slight, you know, minor modifications to each elevation. But the, as I said, I don't want to, I like
Okay.
that you are agreeing with us. C is still in the development stage. Some part of the craftsmanship, some of us do like, to be honest, but we have not developed it and further, you know, so we have to just see how that goes in the mix. And eventually, you know, har- harmony has to be there for architecture. So it will be done properly if you decide to proceed with it.
Okay.
Patrick, do we now need to do a motion?
Um, yeah, if, if the planning commission is satisfied with, um, the plans at this point, including the site plan and the architectural elevations, then, um, there's a, there's a model motion prepared to recommend approval of the preliminary site plan, which would then go to the board of trustees for, um, approval itself for preliminary site plan.
I do, I do have a question about the, um, the fact that we've got a third option that isn't fully developed in here.
It was, that was a choice we made. We could have just not submitted it because we are also, we just wanted to share information that we are working on. You know.
Do.
Okay, good. Proceed with your thought.
Yeah, my question, excuse me, sir, let me finish, please. My question to Patrick is, if we approve this packet, what are we saying about C? And do we, do we, do we need to see C fully developed at this point, or? You know, what?
We can just take it now, do we, is about the right then?
Yeah, I, I think if, if, um, if we're satisfied with A and B at this point, um, it sounds like the applicant is satisfied to go forward with just A and B. And so, um, if we wanted to revise the model motion to explicitly state that, uh, models A and B are included with the preliminary site plan, because those are the ones that the, even the applicant's letter states, these are in final form that they're proposing. I think C is more for informational purposes. Um, if something, um, that looks like C comes back at final and they've, and they've tweaked the designs, the planning commission can consider it at that point. But in the motion, we, we could be explicit with models A and B.
Okay, so if we, if we are explicit tonight, A and B, uh, they could come back later with an, with an amendment on C, right?
Um, either an amendment or when they come with final site plan, they could have A and B and then they could have C or any other number of elevations and put those before the planning commission to consider at that time.
So that's what I, that's what I wanted to know, can, can we really look at those at the final site plan or, I mean, if they come in with more elevations?
Yes.
Okay.
That's fine. To me, that's fine.
Me too. Uh, Mr. Chairman.
I just don't want to go backwards, that's all.
I have, I have one more question for, uh, the project sponsor before you, uh, make any, any kind of motion. Um, one of the things that concerned me in terms of the quickness of, uh, the last time around was the fact that when you eliminated the clubhouse and you changed it into a regular house, why wasn't the numbering changed on the lots? I mean, that just seemed so slapdash to me. That, that was part of the bothersome, you know, point, uh, of this, this whole thing.
Um, that's on my part, uh, I'm sorry. We were having a real-time crunch and what, uh, I had to revise all the construction plan sheets which are included in here. So I thought it was easier for, even I did, uh, exhibit B's with this. So it was a lot of changes were required, but I will do that. I can renumber these.
Well, it's, I, I don't know if you've, if you've dealt with contractors, but they're, they're, they're not gonna be happy not by finding forty three, uh, in the, the proper order when they come to deliver materials. That's just, that was one of my concerns, but it, my big thing was just, it just seemed part of the slapdash nature of it and I think that's part of the resistance, uh, that we had as well. But I'm okay with it. If you're okay with it, if you are, if you want to change it. Uh, I just, I just needed that question answered, that's all. Commissioner Zubor, you have started to make a motion.
I did indeed. Um, I move to recommend approval of the preliminary site plan for Anan Village on Tax Purseel, as noted, which includes forty three single-family detached residential condominium units on eleven point five one net acres, subject to the applicant renaming Heather Place to a name that is not duplicated elsewhere in the township into continuing to work on scheme C.
Support.
Did you, wait a minute, do, do we need to mention A and B?
Um, well, we're approving the packet, so I, I guess I figured that it was.
Well, but the packet now includes C.
But I said subject to reworking C. So I get, I, we can say, you're fine and we want to keep working on C, that's fine.
I, I would feel more comfortable actually listing it that way.
Sure. Okay. Reread that.
Well, I think Patrick can schmooze the, the verbiage in that.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think, um, the motion, uh, move to recommend approval of preliminary site plan for Anan Village and then there we can put in including elevations A and B.
Okay. Awesome. Okay. Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Zubor. Any support?
Support.
Alright, motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Zubor, please call the vote.
Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Okay. So, um, then our next step would then be to, uh, take this to the trustees, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And, um, you know, at some point in time, we will get to look at some other things that they, they propose. Okay, I like that. I think, uh, you guys did a fine job and thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Mahan for, uh, working with us on this. I know it was not, not easy, um, but I think.
This is, this is, Bob Ward, can I make, uh, one minute confession?
I don't know, none of us have priests.
Oh, we, I have been in Michigan for fifty-six years and we will do right by Canton. The original submitter to submit to was a bad judgment on my part because I thought we were just coming for extension and giving this new information might create more confusion. We have been working on this alternate plan for months now and we will improve it and you will be very happy with it. But original submission, which wasted your time, was a bad judgment on my part.
Well, I, I appreciate that, sir. Thank you for saying that. It wasn't necessary, but, uh, thank you all nonetheless.
I remember it's not right.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Alright, we look forward to, to, uh, working with you some more.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so our third agenda item of the evening is the Zar Plaza, where we're considering developer instigated revision to property located south of Cherry Hill between Denton and Ridge. Patrick, uh, what's more detail on that?
Um, thank you. The Zar Plaza site is, is a plan development district uh, in Cherry Hill Village that consists of two commercial buildings comprising about nine thousand square feet on a point six two acre parcel. It's located at the southeast corner of Cherry Hill Road and Roosevelt Street. The PDD and the site plan were approved in twenty sixteen. Uh, the site improvements are nearly completed and the planning division had conducted an inspection on August twenty sixth of this year to review the landscaping and other site improvements. During our site inspection, it was apparent that the architecture of the buildings was inconsistent with the approved plan. Um, there were several noticeable differences between the approved plan and the as-built construction, which include replacement of EFS cornice around the building perimeter with brick and metal coping, replacement of stone columns with brick, replacement of stone base with brick and concrete, and replacement of the limestone window casing and lintels with brick. Uh, as a result, the constructed buildings are only a passing resemblance to the approved plans. In some cases where there are architectural modifications, whether it's an approved plan or if there's um, a renovation to a longstanding existing building, in some cases, those kind of changes can be sometimes reviewed by staff. But when they're, uh, considered major, we often refer them to the planning commission. Um, in this case, um, there's really no question of whether it's something that staff reviews or the planning commission, because it's so drastically different. Uh, the plan has not received, or the building has not received a certificate of occupancy yet. Uh, and there's an approved, uh, plan development and a site plan for the property that the planning commission was expecting to see. Um, this, uh, this application is most decidedly with, with the planning commission in terms of the scope of changes, the number of changes. Um, looking at the Cherry Hill Village overlay district design guidelines, um, there are a number of, uh, design guidelines um, that, um, the designed building complies with, that the constructed building does not. Uh, there are four major ones that we called in our letter. The first one is the massing. The guidelines state that the, the top of the building should have an upper cornice or parapet. Uh, and the approved site plan included the cornice. The cornice provides a more decorative finished appearance at the top of the buildings, um, especially from Cherry Hill Road and Roosevelt Street and the neighboring residences to the south. Uh, the second design element was the building materials. The guidelines recommend different materials to divide the foundation, the building walls and the roof. The approved elevations accomplish this with the use of stone for the foundation, brick and limestone for the walls and a decorative cornice for the roof. While the stone foundation might not be possible at this point, the exposed concrete foundation must be repaired and we recommend a stone or brick veneer siding to cover the exposed concrete. The third design element is the windows. The guidelines recommend various window components that should be included, uh, that should be used, that include sills, exterior casing, lintels and holdings. The approved plans included limestone sills, casing and lintels with a keystone. However, only the sill and keystone were constructed. The limestone would have been a very effective way of creating an attractive facade, but now the facades are simply uniform. To improve the facades, um, awnings could also be considered. And finally, the fourth design element was the columns. On the approved site plan, the use of stone columns created much more attractive buildings and they broke up the mass along the building's elevations to be pedestrian scale. By using the exact same brick for the columns, the buildings look very uniform with the same expansive feel along the entire building. Um, staff's recommendation is that because the constructed buildings are only a passing resemblance to the approved plans um, and they don't comply with Cherry Hill Village overlay design guidelines noted in our report, we recommend that the planning commission postpone action on the site plan amendment subject to receipt of revised architectural. Subject to receipt of revised architectural elevation plans that are consistent with the design guidelines and the previously approved plans. Um, also, um, that would be in addition to any comments tonight by the planning commission in terms of um, any design. Uh, criteria or recommendations from the planning commission itself. Uh, so that concludes our staff report and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Um, I am uh, at a loss for whether or not we should even have a discussion on this. Um, does it, would it do, do any good? Um, is the, is the project sponsor uh, in the audience tonight?
Uh, yeah, the project sponsor is in attendance. Um, Mr. Zar is in attendance, he has his hand raised and um. Mr. Zar's architect, uh, Mona Hamud is also in the audience as well.
Okay, I would like to hear from them if they would like to speak.
Uh, yes, I will allow both to talk.
Hey, uh, good evening.
Welcome.
How are you? Thanks for allowing uh, you know, us time to speak. Quickly, I just, first time I've done this, is there a way to share? Like a presentation or, or pictures through this uh, Zoom meeting, or is it just simply uh? Verbal communication.
Patrick, you have that ability, right?
Um, yes, I can. Okay, I can, I can opt to share the screens here.
So, while you do that, you know, first, I guess, let me just give some background. During construction, we had lots of, we had the two masons leave the job. Um, and it was during COVID, we were under timelines to finish uh, the project and it was difficult to find labor. Find, find masons and find other people. And so, given the crunch, given kind of the unprecedented circumstances. We deviated from the approved plan, trying to stay consistent uh, with the Cherry Hill overlay guidelines. And we're also open to further revisions, um, you know, to try to come to be more consistent, you know. Per Mr. Sloan's recommendations. Um, one thing I, I, I want to note is, you know, the guidelines provide recommendations. Um, as well as guidelines, they're not um, hard and fast rules. Kind of as stated uh, by Mr. Sloan during his read of the guidelines, using words should recommended. Those, those are not requirements, those are recommendations and things um, that should be considered for the overall artist uh, architectural look. Um, and you know, one of the things I would just like to show the, the planning commission, the commissioners is, you know. The, the, the townhouses, the, the development across the street, which don't contain the features. Described, which further kind of shows that these were not, then town was not here to not comply with the guidelines. The town was to deviate in a way that did comply with the guidelines, um, under, you know, unprecedented hardship circumstances. And the conditions that existed during construction. So, just with that background, you know, again, we're here to work uh, with the township. And, you know, complete this project, we have, um, we have people that would like to at least start getting their plans reviewed and approved. So that, you know, they can serve uh, the neighborhood, um, and construction is substantially completed. Um, you know, pending the, pending the landscaping items which are in the building waiting to be put out. Uh, so, that's kind of the background. Is it okay if I share um, the pictures of the theater and other, you know. Developments across the street that do not contain, but uh, the features discussed by Mr. Sloan. But that are also subject to the Cherry Hill Village overlay.
Um, unfortunately, Zoom will not allow me to uh, share or not. It doesn't allow a non-panelist to share, only the host or a panelist can share a screen. Um, I can put up anything that was submitted with the application materials that the planning commission and. Uh, the public have in the planning commission packet. Uh, in terms of the architecture of the, of the downtown Cherry Hill. I can, I can go to Google Street View.
Yeah, I mean, that would be helpful, because you know, there isn't a corn, I believe there isn't a cornish or a, what's a parapet there. The windows don't have limestone around them. Um, the coins that we replaced, you know, stucco coins, I think were on the plan. We replaced them with brick coins. Um, you know, those are present on the townhouses across the street. Um, you know, high level, I know that doesn't, you know.
My, um.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Weber.
So, okay, the other bill, and I don't have a street view up of the other buildings. But the fact of the matter is that this is what was approved by the planning commission. If you weren't, if you were going to deviate with, from it, why didn't you just come into Patrick Sloan's office and. And discuss it with him rather than just taking it upon yourself and assuming it was okay. I mean, that's why you come to a planning commissioner or a zoning board and they approve the plan that's in front of them. It's not, the plan that's approved by the planning commission is not a recommendation. It's, that's, that's the plan that's supposed to be built. And if it has, and if it has to change, so be it, but there's procedures to follow to make it change.
I, I, I don't have a good explanation of that other than to apologize and say certain decisions were made on the fly, given the hardship. You know, and, and they, that shouldn't have happened. And so that's why we're here to, you know, request the review of the revised plan and make further modifications. Um, per your, you know, your judgment, Mr. Sloan's, you know, recommendation.
Okay, well, the, the, the point is, and Commissioner Weber is right on this, and, and I was going to bring this up myself. I'm concerned with the lack of communication between uh, yourselves and the planning depart, department. Because obviously, there, there is a method by which we, we operate successfully and it was not done. And, and this is a concern that the judgments were made without communicating with the, the proper authorities and the proper uh, minds. Going forward on this, there might have been some input that could have been made by us or by, by Patrick and his staff. Um, that, you know, could have helped all along, but I, I, we got a rogue situation here that is very disconcerting to me.
Yeah, I was going to say something about the, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
You know, you, you, you're saying, you're, you're right, it's the, our guidelines are guidelines and they include the word should and, and. That sort of thing, but you came to us with this drawing that you presented to us that we approved. You guys obviously spent a lot of time and money putting that design together. And we approved the design you brought us, we didn't impose that on you. So, what should have been built was what was in your drawing that we approved.
Yeah, and I, and I agree, and you know, again, I guess we're a little bit out of COVID now, but the availability and things. And I agree, there should have been more communication, like at this point, you know, I'm not going to sit here and give excuses, right? I want a way forward to communicate more now that we're past those times and try to resolve the issue. Um, that, you know, that existed previously, um, and in a better way.
Well, the problem I have is, you're kind of, you're kind of putting us over a barrel here. I mean, obviously, you spent, you have expended a lot of time and money and labor on this and. And the, the feeling is that, so, in, in a way. A, a gun's being held to our head that we have no choice but to approve it because it's there. I mean, by all rights. We could say no, and you gotta go back to the drawing board. I don't think we want to do that.
And our intent is not to put any.
I, I guess I would defer to the architects in the room and to Patrick. To say, is there a way to modify this as it sits now to more closely resemble what's. What's there without going ha, having to go back and reinvent the wheel?
Yeah, I think it would be challenging.
Patrick, um, the, in the state of this right now, with, with, we've got an as-built situation. And then we've got the deviations that are out there. So, obviously, you know, we could force modifications. Um, you know, I want everybody to be successful that comes to Ken who wishes to come to Ken and do business. Um, however, I think that when you make these kind of deviations without, you know, going through the proper channels. It, it's a very risky behavior. So, now here we are, and, and let's move forward from this. Can this be modified? Can, could, I know it's going to be a cost. But can this be modified to get to where we were going to get this product initially? Uh, that's, that's a pretty big change and, I mean, I'm not, I'm not an engineer and I'm not an architect. So, my question is, can that be done?
Well, that's, that's definitely a question for the applicants and their architect. Um, the same four items that are noted here in the staff report. I had noted those to the applicant in terms of areas where it didn't comply with the design guidelines and the previously approved plans. And trying to, trying to see what can be done, what's feasible. And um, if, in their opinion, something's not feasible to provide an explanation. So, I think that's something really for the applicant to address, not a matter of should we or shouldn't we? But a detailed reason as to if something can't be done, why? Um, and if something can be done, what and how?
So, should we then table this discussion? Um, I'll get to Commissioner Eganberger in just a second, I just want to finish this up. So, should we then table this and allow them to go back to the drawing board and tell us? What they can do to get back to the design that we expected? Is that, I mean, the, the kind of procedure that we're, we're at right now?
Um, I think.
In other words, come back to us with, with a plan, you know, tell us what you're going to do. Commissioner, well, before, before you answer that, I think Commissioner Eganberger has a pointed thought.
Well, I, when I read what the uh, model motion is, that's to me what it sounds like. We're postponing our action on it while they come up with some revised architectural plans. And that sounds like what we've been talking about wanting. And so to me, this, this motion works.
All right, go ahead, Patrick. Patrick, what were you going to say?
Oh, um, yeah, in, in the, in the absence of anything specifics for the applicant, I think at least a detailed explanation on, on these points. In terms of if they don't think something can be done, they should, they should thoroughly explain in, in a letter from the architect as to why it. Why it's not feasible at this point, and that would just be coming from them, because I'm, I'm not an architect, I don't, I don't know.
Right.
So that's why I would be looking for them to, to tell us, or if some of this can be done or some modification can be proposed on the building. To make it look a little bit more like the approved version back in twenty sixteen, that's something that we, I think we should expect to see.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Foster, do you have a thought on this?
Yes, but I think Commissioners Uber had her hand up first.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually, I would like to hear from, from the architect in this case. I'm curious because as an architect, I would think, I mean, I, maybe I understand the planning process more. Because I've been on the planning commission as an architect, but if you were involved during construction, Ms. Hamud. Would you, wouldn't you have noticed that things were deviating from the construction documents? And maybe pointed out to the, to the owner that they might need to go back before the planning commission?
Um, hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, welcome.
Um, unfortunately, I was not um, involved in that construction process. Um, but I, I just wanted to um, yeah, just mention something that with the elevations that we submitted. Um, we actually uh, proposed like uh, without having to go back and demolish like the top of the building. Or around the windows to go back to the original design. Um, we can probably like add the decorative elements such as um, you know, like decorative canopies uh, above the windows. Some of the windows or the doors, um. We're just trying to figure out some things, um, and that was actually proposed on the elevations that were submitted on the as-built. Obviously, they're not there now, uh, but these are like little animals that might make a difference and break that, um. The look of the massiveness on the facade, since it's all brick. Um, and I just wanted to mention like, um, because one of the other concerns, um, was the, to paint the exposed footing. Uh, on the bottom, um. Actually, you suggested to add brick to it, but the, the problem with that is that that exposed foundation is, it aligns with a face brick. So, if anything is added to the footing, it's gonna exclude out of the facade and that's gonna, that's not gonna look good. So, um, the only thing that I can think of, it's either stucco or paint. And even stucco at the, at the bottom of the, uh, you know, of the snow and the salt in the wintertime, it's not going to be good. Um, the only solution that I can see with that is just painting at this point. And I don't think this is very different from some of the buildings that I've seen on, uh, around the, the plaza. I think some of the buildings actually did something similar to them.
Are you proposing just painting the brick?
It's not the brick, it's just the very top of the footing that's, that is exposed below the brick, below the face brick.
Oh, I see, okay. Okay, well, there's, there's quite a bit more that needs to, to be done to, to uh, give us what was originally proposed. So, um, I'm going to say this to the commission, I think, I think we, we need, we've discussed this enough. Because anything more than that, and we're getting into design issues, and that's not really what our function is here. Um, I suggest we send the project people back to the drawing board and tell us. What they, what they plan to do, um, to make this better. And I'll just leave it at that. I don't say that it has to be exactly like we had before. Give us your proposal uh, in a month or what have you. Um, that says, okay, this is what we can do with an as-built situation. And then go from there. Uh, how does other uh, commissioners feel about this?
Yeah, I, I can give you my, my feedback on that proposed canopy that you've put on the, um, on the as-built elevations. I, I don't think that goes at all in Cherry Hill Village, but that's, that's just my personal opinion, professional opinion too, I guess, but. But I agree.
Okay, uh, anyone else have any thoughts or comments? Commissioner uh, Engel, did you have any thoughts on this?
Yes, I, I guess, what the applicant, what was he coming in front of us, like what was he hoping for? That we would approve it, or, because there's no other alternative, you haven't, so we gave you another month. I thought you would come here and say, this is how we hope to make it more in line, so, but you have nothing for us?
So, I think, hey, I'm sorry. No, I, I think there's been, you know, one of the, we've had difficulty communicating, um. You know, I think we'll take responsibility for that with the township. And so, I think the next step is for us to communicate with Patrick, figure out, you know, what improvements need to be made. And we, we attempted that, we tried to add, I think, a canopy in this one and explain the differences. And then as well, you know, how they match up with the overlay, with the, the other buildings in the area. Obviously, I couldn't present that here, uh, but I think next step is we will add that to the. An updated plan, we'll communicate with Patrick and try to find, you know, the, to get as close or, you know, in compliance with the Cherry Hill overlay. As path, you know, for the next uh, review.
Okay, Patrick, the, um, the, uh, model motion proposes, um, postpone action, quote unquote. Um, is that the same thing, the same tabling?
Yes.
Okay, all right, um, because I think that's where we're at.
Greg, I think Summer has had her hand up for a while.
Well, I, I don't know, there's been so many hands up, I don't know who's, because I don't know who's supposed to take those hands down. But anyway, go, Summer, did you, do you have any more that you wanted to say?
No, I just wanted to say that I do, um, I agree with everything that's been said about tabling. But also just want to lift up that I'm concerned about the precedent. Um, that's that if we, if we move forward and with this as-is and not, um, not see what can be done to make the changes. Um, I think that sets a really bad precedent for the planning commission and for Ken and township.
Here, here.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add too, I, I hear the petitioner say, I'm looking at a street view right now of Cherry Hill Village Theater. And some of the other buildings on the opposite side, and I guess I'm not quite clear what the petitioner thinks. How this, that's being presented to us is similar to what's across the street. Um, but that said, we can, we can have that discussion next month or whatever is on the agenda.
Yeah, because to me, I, I, I think it might be a moot point, uh, at, at this point, because it's like, okay, we're not approving what we're seeing. And I don't think we can be, uh, you know, convinced. That because other elements across the street or down the street are similar, that this is, that's going to make that all better in our minds. So, so I'm, I'm thinking a proposal for, um, you know, a motion for a tabling is in order here. And I hope, um, that they're sincere about coming back with something, with a proposal that we're going to like. I'm going to leave it at that.
Mr. Chairman, I moved to postpone action on the site plan amendment on said parcel. Mister Chairman, I moved to postpone action on the site plan amendment on said parcel, subject to receipt of revised architectural elevations. I'm going to take out the word plans, um, to clarify this, just elevations that are consistent with the Cherry Hill Village overlay district guidelines. And the previously approved plans of said application.
Second. All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, and I look forward to seeing what you propose, uh, you know, in the future for us. Now, we're, we're excited about this, so we're excited about the village and, you know, I think that you, you want to do a, a good thing and make a great product. So we're looking forward to that. So good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's see, that was our third agenda item tonight. We do have some business to take care of with staff. We have a staff referral, uh, for the Canton Banquet and Convention Center. That sounds very, very interesting. Do I hear a motion to send that to staff?
So moved.
Any support? All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Engel. Commissioner Zuber, would you call a vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel. Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, and then we have.
Is this, is this the one we reviewed earlier this year?
What are you talking about?
Didn't we review, wasn't our site plan or something on this banquet center earlier this year?
I think, didn't we have a zoning? And there was something about that property. I think it was a zoning issue.
This, this one over on east side of Lots Road, uh, between Michigan Ave and Van Born. A couple of years ago, it was with the planning commission and it got approval for special land use and then that special land use, um, later.
Uh, okay. I thought we had done something more recently than that.
I thought it was, it was a piece of property that had a lot of trees on it that had to be cleared and such.
Yeah, I.
I'd have to go back and look.
Because that's just, that's just north of the landfill, right? Okay, well, yeah, no matter.
Whatever.
Okay, so we've got a public hearing to set for November first, uh, two items, Dogology University. Why, why are we, why do we have to do that? Again, I thought we already did the special land use for dogology. Didn't we do that already?
Uh, yes, um, they, they had applied concurrent with their rezoning of that southern ten feet. And, um, the, the thirty feet south of the building. So the rezoning on this evening's agenda item. If that property is rezoned by the Board of Trustees, that will be a newly rezoned piece of property in the C two district. Which then would make them eligible to apply to expand the use into those areas. So it's, uh, it seems like kind of a redundant process, but.
But it's what we have to go through because of the ten feet that were not included originally, correct? Is that how that works? I gotcha. Okay, all right, all right. So we've got that, uh, public hearing to set. It also Canton Marketplace and Redwood at Marketplace. So, uh, do I hear a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion to set public hearing for November first by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Sure, uh, Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, and thank you all for participating tonight, um, you know, and, and putting your thoughts into this. I think, uh, you know, we, we made some progress, so looking forward to, to the future. Any further discussion from anyone? Anything that, uh, needs to be addressed, discussed? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Support.
All right, motion to, uh, adjourn and support. All in favor?
I saw everyone say aye, so I'll consider that a roll call vote.
All right, you guys have, have a good rest of the night.